Stephanie.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, agenda, I would like to move seven A to the very end.
Um, I would like to move items six E and F to right after public input. So, um, they're here, they're on the beginning, and then they're all the way at the end, and it's rude to make them slip through that hole.
After four A.
Yes, if we can do that, that would be perfect. So, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes as mentioned before.
Motion, uh, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is public input, this is a time and place for discussions of items not already on the agenda. So, if anybody's got anything that's not on the agenda, or you're on the agenda, feel free to come up and talk.
I actually would like to introduce everybody to Jeff Horn. He is our interim city administrator. And so, his first day was today. And so, if you get a chance to stop in and say hi to Jeff, great. Otherwise, we wouldn't hear you. Jeff.
Alright. Request to address the council by Wayne Novak regarding Gillette Lane Trail Project. Mike, please, Wayne.
I want to address the council on Gillette Lane. First of all, uh, I'm not against the trail, don't get me wrong. We in Novak Estates, and I'm not the sole owner. I have six other people I have to speak to. The last time, when they had a, oh, meeting on it, it wasn't to be. Oh, till the end of the year, I found it out through the paper. I think when you're wanting to start something like this, and it's gonna tap into my checkbook, I'd like to know it, not be backhanded on the deal. And the other thing, uh, there was a comment made that, uh, that night, that we're gonna put it in whether you like it or not. I didn't really appreciate that fact, uh, because I, I don't do that when I sell lots or nothing, I don't do that to people, and I didn't expect it done to me. So, I think that, uh, the last bid was completely out of whack, the mobilization. I showed that to several people, and they couldn't believe it. Ninety-five hundred dollars. I didn't even get charged that to move into Martha Street, and that was a lot bigger equipment. So, I, with that kind of a bid out of sight, and if I remember right, there was a motion to accept that bid, which scared me to death, because I don't have eight thousand to throw on it, right away. It's gonna take four years to pay that off. And I think on the survey, I think the city needs to pay for that, not us as landlords. It's their project. We're only required a four-foot sidewalk, but at eighty-two hundred dollars, that's completely out of sight. So, I hope through the process, that you people take these bids that supposedly are coming, and study them a little bit, and ask some questions. Don't just say, "Yeah, it's his money, I'm gonna pass it." Thank you much.
Please, round with Nate, or some, Wayne?
Well, I do, but I'll do it on E, because that's next.
Okay. Discussion possible, awarding a bid of Gillette Lane Trail Project.
So, I had some conversations with Travis about this, so Travis and I will tag team on this one, but the bids came in, in my opinion, extremely high yet again. And, as you guys all know, I'm not in favor of this project. And I think we have a lot of other things going on right now, and I think we have other places that need to go besides the trail that may or may not be used. In talking with Travis, and he can give you the specifics, but I'm giving you the Cliff Notes version, the city would be able to, for about a thousand dollars, put the four-inch sidewalk in there.
Four foot.
Or four foot, I'm sorry. And then, um, we would be done with this for now. If something happened in the future, we were to get a grant or something that would cover putting a trail through there, we could revisit it then, but I'm just letting everybody know for my part, I am not in favor of spending forty-two thousand dollars to put a trail in there of city money, um, when the city can do what is required for a thousand dollars.
So, they, so what came up was, when we were sitting here waiting for the bid openings, I was told by multiple of the contractors that they're not gonna bid on this, I mean, third time's the charm. So, with, uh, we either, we're either gonna have to go with this, which obviously the Novaks don't sound too keen on, or, at this point, my suggestion would be, we abandon the thing, the sidewalk that we currently have in place, we take down to the four-foot, or we can go to the Sudas five-foot, and then just make the rest of that five-foot through there, which I don't think I had any chance to talk to Nick Wayne about, well, I don't think that's a big deal, adding another foot on going to selling those extra lots, and then we just abandon the trail through there for now.
And that would cost the city?
Uh, we could, we, the concrete's gonna cost us about a thousand dollars. We'd have to, we'd have man-hours in it, but to rip out the existing and make it look nice, we'd have about a thousand dollars worth of concrete.
So, what do we have to rip out?
The existing eight-foot sidewalk that we already put in there. Because if you cut it, it won't look right.
So, there in the outlaw, and then alongside of the one home, right?
There's only, no, it's just the one side. Just the one side that it's eight-foot through there. It's just on the Gillette.
So, you're gonna have to do anything with that part of the sidewalk that comes down through the outlaw, right?
No, we will still, that's on the, that's a different subject, that's on our things to do, that, and then on Walter Street by the cul-de-sac, we're gonna pour that, so we're gonna be in the area anyways pouring sidewalk. So, if the city wants to move on, and just have us, you know, explain to the homeowners there that we're gonna step away from this side of the project for right now, we're gonna, we can either leave it if they wanna leave it, or adapt it down to the normal four-foot, but from here on, the rest of the way is gonna be four or five-foot, whatever you guys deem.
And if we wanted to go to the, the wider one, we have to tear it all back up?
Right. But we don't have any, every, every sidewalk that we've put in, in that area, has been four-foot.
Do you have any idea how many man-hours that would take?
I mean, half a day to rip it out and probably prep it, and then another couple hours to pour it, so, probably a day with two or three guys, day and a half.
Not forty-one thousand dollars worth.
And then we all the way down to the care center?
No, that would just be with the existing, just the existing sidewalk there, and then when they sell the next lot, they're gonna match on to what we decide.
Understood.
Like that first stretch in there at Martha Street, I've got that lot sold, so I will, you know, need to put that in probably.
Right.
And if, it wouldn't hurt, if I could get the right price on it, I'd put it to that other walkway I put in, because I see a lot of people at night walk that, come down that one I put in.
Right.
And then they're out on the street, and I'd rather see them on a sidewalk there, but if I can get a decent price, I'd like to just put that in and be done with it, you know?
So, and that's why if we went to the, the four or five-foot, the city would be out of it completely, then Wayne could get his own price that he's wanting on it, as long as it meets our standards, that for our building code, which are no different than. I just feel like we've, you know, we've beat on this for a while now, and we need to move one way or another, we've spent a ton on engineering.
I want to make a motion to move forward with everything that Travis just said, having the city do it at the four-foot.
Your motion?
Second.
The second. Stephanie.
Hi.
Nate.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
So, we don't have to do F then?
Nope.
Right? I don't, I don't read F, right, Johnny?
Nope.
Request, request to address the council by Todd Nelson.
My name is Todd Nelson, live at five and six East South Street. My wife and I have been there about eighteen years. I'm here with my wife Sue, my daughter McKenna, who's lived in Lisbon all the four months of her eighteen years, and my daughter Callie, who has lived here for her fifteen years. To say that we are disappointed to be here today is an understatement. We don't wanna be here, we would rather be at home getting ready for McKenna's graduation. However, Sue and I believe that sometimes life gives you opportunities where you need to do the right thing, even when it's not comfortable and hard. We all get opportunities to attempt to correct things that are wrong, and as parents, set the right examples, that is why we are here. Let me start by saying that I apologize for the length of this in advance, it's probably gonna be twenty to twenty-five minutes, so if somebody wants to sit down in my conference room. We hope everyone can please understand that we very strongly believe the things that we need to address may or important to the city and the community members, and therefore we hope you can bear with us. I will be addressing our comments mostly to the city council as a group, but we'll occasionally have comments or questions for individuals in the room. But I promise I will attempt to quickly get back to reading this and get through it as quickly as I can. Thank you in advance for your patience. We have attempted to do this outside of the public room, as I would demonstrate and provide email proof, which is that thick. We have tried to give the mayor every opportunity to do this the right way, but unfortunately, that did not happen. We are confident that most, if not all, of U City council members have not been provided all of the information. We are confident that most, if not all, of you have been provided partial information, and as such, we believe a good portion of the information we are about to share with you will be new to most of you, if not all of you. In fact, we sincerely are hopeful that some of this is a surprise to you, and that you don't know it already. We are also, we also believe it is important to give you an idea of both Sue and I's backgrounds before we start. Sue is a human resources expert. She's been in human resources for over twenty-five years. Her official title is Vice President of Employee Benefit of Operations at True North Companies in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Her expertise is employee benefits, compliance with policy, procedure, and employee handbooks, HIPAA concerns, rules and regulations, and other topics. She has an undergrad from Ober-Iowa, a master's of business from the University of Iowa, and she serves on the Board of Directors for Collins Community Credit Union, largely as a human resources expert. She's not just cute, she's very smart. To say that she is an expert in employment-related matters is a huge understatement. My background, I started out largely in the financial field, my undergraduate degrees are in accounting and finance. Like Sue, I have a master's of business from the U of I, in financial compliance and following rules and regulations around funding construction projects is my primary expertise. However, we believe it is important to note for the community, that the company I work for specializes in giving advice and guidance to public sector clients that use taxpayer money. That includes counties, schools, states, and most importantly, cities. My boss, who I'm constantly in meetings with all day, every day, was a chief of staff to the United States Senator, as well as a chief of staff to my Iowa governor. My company has represented the city's line of Kansas on a rain and fire station project, the city of Cedar Rapids on an area, on an arena convention center, parking garage, and a bus terminal. The city of Hermiston, Oregon, and county of Union Hill, Oregon, on building a rodeo arena. Blue Mountain Community College on over twenty related bond projects, and the governor's office of stone recovery for the state of New York following damage from Hurricane Sandy. A part of what my company does is to ensure that the public sector client, such as a city, that we represent is always transparent and always honest with their taxpaying constituents. In the public sector, such as a city, two things are paramount. You must be transparent with your information to your constituents. Number two, you must be truthful with your information to your constituents. For the benefit of the public to hear it, we would like to ask the five members of council individually if they agree with that. Nate, you agree that transparency and truth is pretty important?
Yes.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. Travis?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Thanks. Stephanie?
Yes.
Thanks. We were brought into the Chief Scott employment issue as victims of unintended consequences by someone at the city. We are not certain who that was at the city, I'll explain that a bit more later, but it largely had to do with our daughter McKenna, who was bitten by Rico, the K-9 officer in December of last year. Since we were victims of unintended consequences, before we get started, we would also like to take just a few minutes to say the following. First, we would like to say that we appreciate the time and effort that our city representatives put in. We understand that being public servants takes an enormous amount of time, and opens individuals such as yourselves up to a large monoscrutiny. Sometimes that scrutiny is not fair or deserved. We do not take that lightly, and would like to thank the Lisbon City Council, even mayor, and staffers who will pass and present for their records. We largely believe that the city council is well thought out, you guys take things seriously, and most often are quite good at finding common sense solutions. If we negatively impact someone of you unintentionally on the council tonight, we will regret that. Again, we are hopeful to see looks of surprise in your faces when we share some of this information. Second, Rick Scott is a great person. We believe Rick has been a pillar of this community, and it does not allude to Sue and I, that for being a small town near larger metropolitan cities, we have a very safe place to raise our family. In our opinions, that is in very large part due to Chief Scott. We believe Chief Scott is the perfect chief for the city of Lisbon. We would like to thank him for his service to our community, and let him know that we respect him. Third, we would like to commend Connie Meyer for her service to Lisbon. Connie's worked with and for the city in the areas of finance and administrative, I remarked. Connie's work in the budget administrative role will be subtly missed. When we first moved to Lisbon, Lisbon was in the top tier of property tax rates across the state of Iowa for being one of the most expensive. That is usually the distinction held by large metropolitan areas. Due to the work that Connie has done, Lisbon continues to flourish, while tax rates have remained steady, and return back to the middle pack where we belong. We would like Connie to know that we respect her. Last thing, we would like to say thank you to Burl O'Connor for the work she did as mayor. Listing all of her accomplishments would take an enormous amount of time. We respect Burl most simply for her wisdom and leadership, although it's very difficult to overlook her work ethic and the amount of time that she invested in Lisbon. Burl's leadership and legacy is well documented, and unfortunately, it's already very obviously being missed. We would like Burl to know that we respect her. If any of our words tonight negatively impact Chief Scott, Administrator Meyer, or former mayor Burl O'Connor as victims of unintended consequences, we will regret that, and we want them to know upfront that was not our intent. Okay, getting down to business. Approximately a month ago, the mayor addressed the city and told the city to our constituents, number one, that the action against Chief Scott was not a wish hunt, and number two, that he would be transparent to citizens related to this matter when the time is right. Unfortunately, we regret to inform the council and the community that both of those, both of those things were not true. At a minimum, this was a disagreement with Chief Scott between one or more parties, including the mayor, that escalated out of control and was not managed appropriately by the mayor. Additionally, since that time, we and other citizens have sought public records from the mayor and the city attorney. The mayor and the city attorney have not been transparent with us.
No, this is an opinion, alright?
Or open with all public information. The question we need to ask is why would that be, knowing that money? I appreciate it, I've got it right here, and I'll be happy to go over it with you.
I'd like to see it.
In time, we will. We and other citizens have asked for this public information, and the mayor and city attorney have only provided some of those public records. Again, why would that be? It's illegal not to provide public information, as long as it's not confidential, and again, I have a stack of emails, as well as an inaccurate data point from the state that the mayor read at the last city council, that will prove false. I'm guessing, and again hopeful, that the mayor and city attorney have not told U City council members that they have not provided all information requested. Sue and I intend to schedule and hereby request individual meetings with each of the five of you, so that we can personally show you the proof. We want to meet with you individually to show you the proof, and so then the council as a group can take the appropriate disciplinary actions as needed. We are also going to schedule meetings with any citizen. Who would wish to review the data, in order that we can then provide input to the council as well. It is important next to explain how we were brought into Chief Scott's employment issue. As many people know, our daughter McKenna was bitten by Rico, the K-9 officer, on December nine. That's about seven months ago now. When that bite occurred, none of us, not Sue, not McKenna, and not myself, none of us, talked to one person at the city about that bite. The bite was a non-issue for the Nelson family. In fact, our daughter McKenna took responsibility for the bite. You see, our daughter, daughter McKenna dates the chief's son. That night, McKenna entered the Scott's house on her own, without knocking or being escorted in. Rico's training appropriately triggered to protect the chief and his family. As soon as, as soon as Rico bit McKenna, he realized it was McKenna, and he backed down, stopped, and showed remorse. And McKenna was barely bruised. McKenna loved that dog, even more so after the bite, because she felt responsible. She understood and appreciated that his training took over, and that he realized and stopped for her. McKenna, did I mistake anything there? Thank you. It is very important to note that according to a public data request that was responding to by the mayor and the city attorney, that the mayor and city attorney supplied back to me, it indicated that Chief Scott appropriately notified the city of McKenna's bite the very next day on December ten. I'll also note that last week, the mayor's letter to the city contradicted that public data request information that he and the city attorney supplied, indicating that he was not aware of McKenna's bite until April. I'll come back to that.
Can we stop and address these as we go? Because I feel like if we keep going, it's gonna get hard to kinda keep, because you're seeing inconsistencies in what we're saying, and I already see inconsistencies with what you're talking about.
That's just like a short story.
So, I feel like maybe we should...
I feel like I wanna get through it.
Why, you do, but it's not really fair to get so much.
So, I'm not sure what I'm inconsistent with, so we'll have to come back.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you need to realize that you're inconsistent, I'm saying with what I know, and with what you are saying, I've seen inconsistencies already, and we're only this far.
Yeah.
So, I feel like we should address them as we go, rather than have it all poured out, and then have to go back into each individual thing.
Okay, so what's the inconsistency that you wanna share?
So, you said that McKenna was bitten December, I, the only knowledge I have of this, I was told was that she was bitten February, so that would be the first inconsistency that I would be able to know personally, and I don't know about the rest of council, you can chime in about what your thoughts were about when McKenna was bit.
I can assure you it was in December.
I, I believe you.
She came home.
Just so that you know, from our perspective.
Sure.
We were told February. You said that you had no talk with the city, that's because the city did not know. We did not know anything about McKenna's bite until...
My, my point for that was, is that we didn't address it as an issue, because we were concerned about it.
But we would have, because Rico is a...
City employee.
...employee of the city of Lisbon, and it is a liability for us.
Sure.
Whatever word you wanna use, so we would have came to you and said, "Is she okay?"
So, why does no one come to us now?
Because you haven't informed us.
Why in April, when you found out, and why in May, when you took action, why haven't those two months, where have you been? Nobody came to ask McKenna what she was.
So, first of all, Chief Scott told us that she was fine, and that there was no, that it was a nip, and that there was no, and that everything was fine, so we went with Chief Scott's opinion, or I, I guess speaking for myself, I went with Chief Scott's opinion on that. He told her she was fine, everything was good with it.
Okay.
So, that's why the city didn't contact you. You said that you had gotten a paper for a report that was filed on December ten. I just want you to know that the city did not know about this bite, and I am not aware of any report being filed until the April timeframe, and maybe somebody has an exact date on that, I don't.
According to a data request I submitted, that I received back from the mayor and the city attorney, the city made it on December ten, so that's per the city's words, not any other...
I did not. Did any other...
That request was from Rick. I think we, no, the exact words were from Rick.
So, you tell me something wasn't correct?
I don't know. Let's get to me, and we'll ask him. I'll ask him.
I guess did any other council member?
I mean, I don't know.
Did any other council member know prior?
I guess if the taxpayer was the one who spent all this money before.
I did not.
I did not know. Did, uh, John, you did not know prior to April? Sarah, you did not know prior to April? Nate, did you know prior to April?
I, I heard about it through my daughter, uh, who's friends with McKenna. And, and yet, I, I also knew that Rick's, you know, Chief Scott said that it was a non-issue, she, she was nipped because she came into the house quickly.
And do you remember when you heard that, or?
No.
Okay. We've had a lot, so I just, so I, I just wanted to point those out to you, because I, I don't know what you received from the mayor and the city attorney, I have not privy to that, so if you received something that said that a report was filed on the tenth, we did not get that report as counsel.
Sure, but someone did.
I did not get that report either.
I don't know who got it. I mean, it wouldn't go to Connie, she's the city administrator.
It should've changed me, and I didn't get that report.
So, problem is that we, the Nelson family, have never approached anyone in the city, not even the chief. Again, it was a non-issue for us. However, ironically, in April of this year, we started hearing and getting questions from people in the public about if McKenna was okay due to the bite, and how upset we were to work. So, please think about that for a moment. We hadn't talked to anybody at the city or anybody else, it was a non-issue. Why would people be coming up to us with these questions, when for us it was a non-issue for five months? That leads us to believe that someone at the city was saying that we were upset, and we were a liability threat, in order to have someone to hold it against Chief Scott. Because it wasn't us. Look around the room. Who was it that was telling people at the city level that we were upset? As I stated earlier, we don't know who it was. What we can tell you who it was not, it wasn't Sue, it wasn't McKenna, and it wasn't me. We were dragged into the Chief Scott employment issue through the dog bites, and were suffering what we presume unintended consequences from whoever was saying it for their own motivations. Worse yet, now I understand why, no one contacted us to find out if McKenna was okay, or if we were upset, and to find out the actual reasons behind the bite. And again, that didn't happen in April, it didn't happen in May.
And I would say you should touch here, just to address that. I don't know if anybody from the city would've had any reason to state anything about you guys being upset, because we were all told by Chief Scott that it was a nip, that...
Someone did.
Was total McKenna's issue, like she came in the house and she shouldn't have, just like what you stated.
Tell me if someone did.
I mean, the city would've never thought that, so I don't know why you...
Clearly, in April, the mayor and the personnel committee were consumed with dog bites. I think that's pretty widely known, after all Rico was retired. But was the city attorney and the mayor doing their due diligence with the Nelson family when Rico was retired? In our opinion, someone at the city was saying we were upset, but no one was coming to talk to us, and that is our first indication that this was not about liability, that it instead was something to hold over Chief Scott. Now, let's add to it, next in April, when we started getting questioned, that was the exact same time that Chief Scott got bitten. Is that a coincidence? Again, according to the public data request that was provided to us by the mayor and the city attorney, McKenna got bitten on December nine, Chief Scott was bitten on April seventh. The data request tells us Rico bit the chief during the thunderstorm that night. The data request further tells us that Rico did not like thunder and was agitated. Makes sense that Rico was a police dog and not liked loud sounds like thunder, and it makes sense that dogs are protected by their food. The data request goes on to tell us that chief was feeding Rico... The data request goes on to tell us that chief was feeding Rico and that Rico's food bowl got knocked over during the agitation and the chief reached in to pick it up at the wrong time and he's bitten on the thumb. The data request indicates that the mayor was notified immediately. It is important to note in our opinion here that in his letter to the community last week, the mayor said, and I quote, "On April 7th, the mayor became aware of Rick Scott being bitten by Rico. At that same time, it was brought to the council with the intention that another individual had been bitten." Again, I don't know if that timing is right, but according to the data request, it was not.
Well, if it was April 7th?
The problem with the statement that the mayor read... Well, move on from that. Certainly address that. So, brief timeline. December 9th, McKenna gets bitten. It's reported or not. April 7th, chief gets bitten. It's reported immediately. A week later in mid-April, Rico was on the verge of retirement. We start hearing that we're upset and the liability risk due to McKenna's bite and at the same time, Chief Scott receives his second performance review since 2016 following the bites. That's his second review in only over three years. We start hearing that Chief Scott's performance is in trouble regarding dog bites. Yet no one comes to talk to the Nelsons. Still in mid-April, happy to come back. Let us take a brief second to go back to the performance review thing. In April, Chief Scott got only his second performance review in over three years. Let me provide three important pieces of information for the council and the public here. The timeline of the chief's performance reviews. The mayor and city attorney have not been willing to provide the public data of when the chief was given a performance review. And we had to get the information from others because of that. And finally, what the city employee handbook states about how frequently performance reviews must be given. The timeline first. Chief Scott received a performance review in 2016. No review in 17. No review in 18. Does that sound similar to the lapse of two years in certifications ironically? It sure does. However, the employee handbook says performance reviews will happen annually. Chief received another review in 2019, November, and then another one five months later in April, right at the same time Rico bit chief.
I'll have to correct you. It was July.
It was July?
Yep.
That's not the information I was provided. So, that's all at the same time that we started hearing people... For people who we were upset. So, no review for two years, then two reviews within a matter of months, all right around the time of the bite. And both violating city employee handbook. Does it seem to the council and the public like a coincidence that Chief Scott had no reviews on them too all of a sudden? At the time of the second performance review, the city told us that the certifications were not yet known in April. The information that you guys have provided, after the funding was requested, you indicated that at that point, you started digging into the certifications. So again, there's a gap there.
The police issued reports to the mayor. It was my understanding that the mayor did the reviews on the police.
Okay.
So that he wasn't reviewing. That's not my understanding.
So the reviews were done by the mayor? Okay. But my timing is somewhat accurate.
I have a question too because I only know of one review. So are we saying that there was a review in July of 2019 and then another one in April?
No.
Because I don't know of any review in April of 2020, is that what you're saying? That there was a second review in April of 2020?
April of 2020, there was a conversation between multiple authorities with Chief that was reviewed.
No. We only do the employee reviews.
Are you talking about an evaluation, like employee evaluation?
Performance review.
Okay. Because the review that we had back in April with Chief Scott was... Is not the same as an evaluation.
Okay.
So an evaluation is where manager supervisor fills this out, sits them down and discusses their weaknesses, their...
There was in April?
No. The review was done in this room amongst the council, the mayor, Rick Scott.
Okay.
That's why we went into closed sessions. What's that?
So what happened in April?
A review, not an evaluation. So are you referring to... You keep referring to it as a review.
That's because what it says in the report.
Okay. I think we're referring it to an evaluation.
I don't know. I'm just... Again, I was not privy to any review, evaluation, or anything in April. So if anybody else was part of a review or an evaluation...
The review is what was on the agenda. Review of employee performance. The closed session review.
That's how it was listed on the agenda.
That's how it was listed on the agenda. However, I think what he's referring to is more of an employee evaluation that was given to him in July of 2019.
And then one other thing that I would just like to say is a discrepancy. You had mentioned something and it made me think... Oh, you keep saying that Rick was disciplined because of the dog bites or that this all started because of the dog bites. And I just want to be clear that Rick was never disciplined for dog bites.
I understand.
This all revolved around the certification.
The discipline did, yes. It definitely started with dog bites. I think that's pretty common knowledge.
Yes.
Okay. So, let me talk about the second topic, which is the city's refusal to provide public data. On May 19th, we asked for public data to be supplied. That request included two things that are important to know. The days that Chief Scott received performance reviews, not any personal or confidential information for the last several years and other topics that were a list of numbered items. That was 34 days ago. The next day, on May 20th, 33 days ago, the city attorney replied and indicated we started drafting responses but had questions and requested a phone call to clarify some things. We agreed to a phone call and on May 27th, Sue, the mayor, the city attorney, and myself had a phone call. On May 28th, the next day, the city attorney sent me an email asking to confirm that we no longer needed the documents related to four of the data requests. Four, they're far more important. That same day, we responded, updating the list of our data requests to confirm the public data that we were still seeking. And in fact, we added a few new data requests. But again, I had emails to prove that. In fact, one of the topics that was newly added at that point was to ask for Rico's health records. The reason for that is that the city attorney and the mayor indicated to us on the phone that night that Rico was retired in part because he had health issues that could not allow him to function in his job. Is chief still outside? Chief, did Rico have any health issues that would have kept him from performing his job? What's that? They said, "Did Rico have any health issues that would have kept him from performing his job?"
No.
Sue, did they tell us on the phone that night that Rico was retired in part because he had health issues that would affect his performance?
I want to ask, did you not stand outside there and tell me that he has a lump on his side of his leg?
Yeah, and I was going to get that checked out. That was... Yeah, I guess. But his hips and stuff, I don't know.
Also, we had a meeting with Rick, Sarah.
Yes.
The mayor, myself, and Mark, in which Rick told us that basically the dog was on the verge of dying.
It had a spot. He was pretty sure it was cancer, is what we were...
And that was going to get checked out in May.
He said, I mean, your words were, "The dog is dying." That's what he said. "The dog is dying."
I didn't think he was dying.
Does anybody else remember that conversation? You were all over it.
I remember. I'm the city attorney. I remember the discussion about the lump. I also remember the discussion about foot, the foot injury. Rico?
Skin infection. Yeah, that was later.
That part was later.
Mr. Nelson, when I told you that that night, that was the information that I had received, I believe, from Chief Scott as to the condition of the dog. Okay. So why had you been unwilling to supply me the Rico's health records at this point?
I still have not received them.
Have not received them. I think the chief has a copy of them or the mayor has a copy of them tonight. So why didn't I get it?
To be honest, I've been asking for them for several months, the vet records, and I've never seen any of them.
They're available. They're available to give it to you.
Clearly not.
Who has the vet records?
I do.
I got a copy of them right here, too.
Rick, do you have a copy of them?
Yeah.
Can you get Mr. Nelson a copy of the vet record? So, let me go on though because there's another important point here. On June 2nd, the city attorney sent an email providing the public information that the city had regarding Rico's bites and when they were reported. He also indicated that the city had supplied all other information verbally on the phone. That's really interesting since we had updated the list and added new things to it the day after the phone. We responded the same day and indicated that we did not get all of the information requested, especially some of it that was new after the phone call. The city attorney responded and indicated the city, meaning the mayor, believed they had supplied all the information requested. Again, how is that possible? We traded several emails on June 2nd and we indicated, first, that we had added new things to the list and, second, that we believed we did not receive it, but we understood that you felt like maybe you did. So, fair play, fine. We suggested, hey, since you say you already supplied it, why not just send it to us again? Easy, right? You already supplied it, you know the answers. Just send it again. Guess what? Crickets. Nothing. That was 18 days ago. That is illegal. No question. Let me direct, if I may, Mayor. Mr. Nelson has made a public data request. It's different than a public records request. I O code Chapter 22 allows or requires the city to provide certain public documents unless they're documents that are privileged. Many of, many if not most of Mr. Nelson's questions are that question. They're not document requests. And we believe that we did answer those questions. And he's right, we did exchange several emails first part of June. And my suggestion to Mr. Nelson was, sir, if you don't believe you received all the information that you wanted via your request to come to a city council meeting and address this body, then this council would answer your questions to the extent they're able to answer them. And you're here tonight. That's why we're here. And then let me finish. Then I received an email from you on June 17th where you have 19 different questions and or requests and all the six are struck because you did answer those questions apparently. And the follow-up email that you were talking about, you had six listed items. I believe we had our conversation in May with you and Sue. If we address items one through four, you still needed five and six. Those document... That information, which really wasn't a document request, but I believe you had a right to know, was produced by Rick Scott and provided to you. My follow-up email, one through four, asked to make sure that we still... You no longer wanted those four items. That was the purpose of that email. And I think you've still got six items left from your email on June 17th. And I'm sure the council is more than happy to try and, Rick, since he's here, answer those questions to the extent they can. Most of my questions were not questions. They were data requests. There is a difference between data requests and public document requests. They both carry the same weight that they should be answered as long as they're confidential. There is nothing in my list that's confidential. Or there are still items that remain outstanding. And if we go over that, I'll be asking to schedule a meeting involving you to do that if there was anybody else who wants to see it.
I appreciate that you want to have individual meetings with everybody, but I feel like that's where we get into trouble because there's meetings that happen and not everybody's privy to those conversations and we're all here, so I feel like we should just get it out there tonight. I feel like tonight should be the night. I have been saying pretty much since the beginning of this that this all needs to be completely transparent. Everybody needs to...
I think I just heard the city attorney admit that he's not supplied everything that he should have. I think that is correct. So what I said was I... Have you supplied everything? What I said was, I believe that we had that conversation after the meeting in May, but I believe we had answered all of your questions. Did I not send an email back to both of you saying that you had not and pointed out specifically that there were new items on the ones? You did. And did you respond after that with any additional information? Not additional information, but I told you I thought that we had answered all of your questions to the extent we have not. Please bring them to council. So you have not supplied any additional information? You almost rightly have. I think I've answered your question, Mr. Nelson. I think you have too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I think is there something in that code about if the document's there, we provide it, if it's a public document, if we don't have to create documents, if we don't have one?
That's correct. It's just public information. That's right.
And so my... And part of being why Mark is not responding is because as a council, we have been dealing with this for literally months. We have spent a small fortune dealing with this. Typically, a citizen doesn't have readily available access to the city attorney to just be emailing. We did give you leeway because we did want, you know, this to get resolved and get your information that you wanted and needed. So I think this is...
Actually, a public data request does go into the legal body.
It would come to the mayor and then the mayor would pass it on to the legal body, but you have really had...
Which is what he did.
Right. You have really had the free brain ever since then to just continue to email back and forth with the attorney.
Okay.
So all I'm saying is, I think for the sake of time and money and effort, I think we just should get this out on the table tonight and be done with it. It is time for this to be done with. And I believe that maybe all sides don't have the correct information. Maybe none of us really have the right information. And I think the only way to make sure that we are all on the same page is for everybody to understand why everybody felt the way they did, did what they did, understood what they understood, and get it all out there once and for all. So if you know the questions that you haven't got answers to, anybody who could answer them, I'm sure would be happy to.
Well, one of them was the health issues. That was a big one. And so I think we addressed that. My point is, is why are these two guys not providing information that's in the public?
I... From listening to Mark, I don't know who does, but from listening to Mark, I feel like you felt like you did until council maybe kind of told you to back off a little bit.
Well, I just want to know what public information you're still requesting that hasn't been provided. I've never received the health records. We just addressed that. Yep. What's the next? That's the main one. The second one is I've never seen it.
Did you guys have a request to get a copy of the health records from officers for Chief Scott? And when did you get them?
Stephanie, excuse me. This is my... So...
She can speak up.
One thing...
On the council chairman.
One thing that I have not gotten as well are the days of the performance reviews. Had I gotten the information, maybe we wouldn't have this meeting.
So I do not know those two dates now?
No.
Does anybody have the dates of the performance reviews?
They should because they've answered them, right?
One was in 2016 and then the other one was in July.
July of 2016 and July of 2019.
Seventeen, eighteen, Burl never did them.
Burl was sick at that time and didn't do them.
And right here's the one that I'm doing right now.
It's paid for. Thank you.
So I, I don't have to, I've never done a performance review one, because I was the mayor at the time. Burl was the mayor at the time. So, I mean, and Connie, when Connie, we put Connie in charge, she did his review.
And I would say too, I think everyone sitting here can say, God love Burl, but there was a time where she just maybe didn't do everything that a mayor should have been able to do or couldn't do at all. And things got a little lax on the city side of things because of that. She was very sick. It wasn't a perfect situation.
Yeah, I think Burl did a great job.
And she didn't do her view, you know, she didn't do her review, I don't know, but.
It does however state in the employee handbook, on page eight, that performance reviews will be on an annual basis. Not every three years, not every five or six months.
You're right, to a hundred percent.
We understand that.
Okay?
There's a lot of us that weren't on even on the council then, so.
Hello?
I am looking shivering, it is so cold in here. Sue, feel free to hit that button up a couple notches if you do.
So, Chief Scott was reprimanded over five certifications. What that meant is that someone on the council, actually a couple of you on the council, indicated that there was a great deal of liability that the city was exposed to from that. However, my understanding, not that I'd understand it, it's part of the questioning, and I never got an answer to it as well, is what great deal of risk did that expose the city to? The arrest was still valid at the city level, if there was an arrest on. The arrest was still valid at county level. The arrest was still valid at state level. So really, the lack of certification poses no risk whatsoever.
I'm going to address this.
Okay.
Todd, if Rick would pull somebody over on Highway 30, he doesn't know what, it's for speeding, right?
Sure.
But if there is cause that he wants to have Rico sniff out the car, and they find, now guns along with drugs, it becomes a federal case.
Sure.
That federal case would have been thrown out.
It would not have been thrown out. He would still be prosecutable at the state level, would he not?
But it's a federal case. State level, but it's.
You could still prosecute it at the state level, can you not?
I think we could establish that if we paid thousands of dollars for a dog, and thousands of dollars for training on a dog, and thousands of dollars for neighbors on a dog, we should use the dog at every level possible.
Sure.
So whether it could be still prosecuted at a state level, once the guns and stuff were found, it would have been moved to a federal level, but it would have been thrown out. The other problem is, as I understand, even at the state level, if Rico would have been used to issue a search warrant or to put a search warrant into effect, because he's not certified every year, that would not be valid either.
Okay.
And that's at a state level.
And that's at the state level.
Yes.
So, still though, not much risk, in my opinion.
Huge risk, in my opinion.
How so?
Because you could be looking at all kinds of problems. I mean, you could be looking at several different variations of how that could play out.
Because arrest at a different level was still valid versus not being prosecuted at a different level? It's not like you're going to sue him over it.
I mean, I don't know that. I don't know if somebody would sue us for.
So what you're saying is you don't know if there was risk?
No, I don't know if there was risk, but I know that there potentially could be, and there should never be.
Got you. In addition, there were zero due risks during the time, because there were zero arrests.
So zero use of the dog during that time.
Okay.
I would like to address that. We had, again, a meeting in this room with Rick, and Sarah, and Doug, and Mark, and it was the very first meeting we had about Rico. And we asked Rick what was going on, why wasn't Rico certified since July of 2017? And his words to us were, we did not use, I have not used the dog in two years because I knew it wasn't certified. So that is really where my issue comes in in all of this, because I am very, very bothered by the fact that not only did we pay a lot of money for Rico, we paid a lot of money for Rico's trainings, we paid an officer, at least one officer, 16 hours a month to do Rico's trainings, we paid for food, we paid for vet bills, we paid sometimes for boarding when Rick was out of town and Rico had to be boarded. There was a lot of expense that went into that dog. So to have the chief of police sit there and tell us, I have not used the dog in two years because I knew he wasn't certified, is a big problem for me. That was really the biggest problem for me.
So I'll agree with you on that, and that's new information to me. That's different than risk being caused by the dog not having a certification and then the topic of not being used. So the city, the city never mentioned that to anybody in the public?
I did. You probably couldn't hear me because I was on the Zoom meeting, which was a nightmare.
So it started out with fights, and morphed into that, that it became a lapse of certification, and then it became about the fact that we're paying for something that we're not using?
It was actually in the statement that the mayor made the last meeting that he read. It was stated in that, I believe, that we were told that the dog had not been used for two years. I believe it was in that statement.
And I'm not just reading this because he absolutely should have gotten paid this money, but you have to remember that we just paid him $15,000 for those two years of taking care of that dog that he couldn't use it.
That's a non-issue.
It's not a non-issue for me, as not only a council member, but as a taxpayer as well.
Then tell the public that that's why there's repercussions, not because it's a lapse of certification that caused it, or lack of.
That the lapse of certification is what brought all of this on.
You know, the dog likes to come to this.
No.
Okay.
That's true.
So, we are here because we have not been provided the information in this group, because we didn't get it from him and from him. We asked for it, we tried to do it the right way behind closed doors, and we were never provided all of the information. Again, had we been provided the information, maybe we wouldn't be here. But so why were we not provided information? Why were we too high in the promise? And how is that right? There are employee policy violations that are very clear from this, and there are data record requests that are very clear from this, that were not upheld. How is that any less risky than what we just talked about?
Thanks, is it?
Sure. Please do.
I got your last email here. And who did Chief Scott report to during the period of federal certification lapse? When we sat in that meeting, me and Mark called you and Sue, did I not tell you that my mom, I said Burl, at the time, was in, was in charge of the police department?
You told us you did not know the dates.
What, I did not say, I did not say that Burl was in charge of the police department?
Not that I recall, no. You, you didn't know the answer?
No, I might, I might have said the mayor was in charge of the police department. I might have said that.
I, I don't recall that, no. You did not know the dates, and you needed to get back to us.
For, for what?
For who supervised Chief Scott during those times, and when.
I've known that for eight years. I mean, that's, that's, the mayor's always been in charge of the police.
That says right in the employee handbook.
Except for the time the city council voted to put Connie in charge of him when Burl was, when Burl was down.
Right, and actually, now that you say that, I do remember you saying that there was a time when Connie supervised him, and you didn't know what those dates were.
And I didn't, I didn't know when it was. I admit that. I had no idea what the date was.
So why not provide the liquor?
So.
Was the question, who was in charge of Rick when the certifications lapsed?
When, when they lapsed, it would have been Burl.
Yeah, and we've always known that. That had nothing to do with Connie, she wasn't in charge of him anywhere near that time.
We did know that.
Okay.
But again, I'm not, I had nothing.
Just to be very clear, I think the timeframe for Connie was August of 2019 to December of 2019. Does that sound?
No, it was August of 18 to December of 19.
So what I'm just going through, Todd, is your latest email where you have stuff crossed out. It says, provide, please provide Rico's beginning service date. Rico started, and I could get Rick in there, I think it was 2015. I can't tell you the exact date.
April.
April of 2015. Please provide a list of Rico's health issues that the city was aware of that might have impacted his ability to serve as a K-9 office, officer. He, Rick, told us that he had a lump on his side, and he was prone to having dog bites. Who did Chief, we just answered that one. Please provide the dates, only the date of performance reviews of Chief Scott from, it says 2017 through present. So, you said there was one in 16, and 17, and 18. The former mayor didn't do one, and 19 County did one, and I'm working on his right now. Please provide examples of what type of liabilities, we just talked about that. Also, you have never, you have never reported, you have never provided who Chief Scott reported to from 2017 through current. And I just did. So what other questions you got for us?
None. It would have been great to have those 30 days ago, but for some reason, we had to play a game, and we couldn't get them.
What do you want, what do you want us to, want to argue some more, what do you want to do, so? We need to move on.
I don't want to argue. In fact, again, we tried to do it the right way, and we all know what it was, and I just don't understand why. If this wasn't a witch hunt, why, why did you stone him? Why didn't you tell him what I needed to know?
Why, why do you say this is a witch hunt?
Because it started out as dog bites, and we were hearing it from people in the community, that we were upset, which we had never talked to anybody. And then it went from dog bites and morphed into a lapse of certification.
Can I explain?
And then apparently it morphed into that we're not using the dog that we paid for.
Can I explain how that happened?
Sure.
So.
That'd be great, no?
I've heard about the, I offered to have a conversation with you, and you didn't want to have a conversation with me.
That was over you telling me that people were telling you that I trashed people.
That's right. And I said, you're happy to stop.
Sorry, we don't need to argue about that.
You said, go ahead, talk, we'll talk.
I'll go back to that right now. Somewhere else, Doug.
Yeah. No, we're not going to do it here. This is my room, and we're not going to do that here.
And I said to you that I would be happy to sit down with you and tell you how this process came to be, that I've always wanted to be open about it, from the very, very beginning. I've wanted everybody to know everything. So, at some point, we heard, well, Rick got bit, and there was a report filed on it. And then, when that report came to me, then there was saying, there was talk saying that there had been a second bite. At that time, nobody knew about the second bite. I don't think a single council member at that time, maybe Nate, because he heard from somebody else, I don't know when you heard that, so I don't know.
I can't remember either.
I don't think any of the four of us knew anything about another bite at the time that Rick got bit. We had, you know, we had heard maybe like a week before rumblings in the community that there maybe was a bite, but we had never officially heard anything from Chief Scott. So, so Rick's bite comes, and initially, I'm like, is that normal for a canine to bite its handler? Because I'd been told the whole way through this that his job is to protect Rick, and that he would literally die to protect Rick. So then I was a little concerned that why would the dog be biting its handler? So, I was not on the council when Rico was purchased, and I guess, I assumed that what I would find is an employee file on Rico, just like I would find on any other employee. I assumed that everything would be in that employee file, but I don't have an employee file on Rico. And I still don't understand that right now, why there's not an employee file on a city employee, but that's another issue. So I reached out to the city administrator and said, could you please give me in contact with the person that we purchased Rico from, because I would like to know several things. I would like to know how long the certifications are good for. I would like to know if the city has any responsibility at the end of the five years that Rico, when his term is up. What are our responsibilities as far as what do we do with Rico? Do we just automatically give him to the handler? Does that reduce his liability? Do we give him back to him? I know some breeders that if you get rid of the dog, you give it back to the breeder that you got it from. When the city purchased the dog, was there anything in the contract that the city, that we need to follow through with? Because I don't know any of this, and truthfully, nobody knew any of it. Rick Scott didn't know, Connie didn't know, council didn't know, mayor didn't know. Nobody really knew what the protocol was with this dog. So I asked Connie to reach out to the gentleman that we got him from, so that he could educate me on basically police dogs, because I know nothing about it. She reached out to him, he returned her call, and at that time, he told us that he did not think Rico was certified. And then, short while later, I had a resident come up and ask me if Rico was certified. At this point, I don't know if Rico's certified, because I know that the person we bought him from doesn't think he is, and I don't know, because I can't find any records. So, I tried to call the guy, Doug tried to call the guy, he wouldn't respond to any of us. The only person he would respond to was Chief Scott. So, long story short, that, you know, we never really got any information from him. So that's when we started asking Chief Scott, we really need these certifications, could you please give us a certification? Doug, I think, is the one that actually went to him and said, we really need certifications, could you please give us certifications? And we didn't get them for quite a while. And I said, I want to see the vet records, I want to see the training records, I want to see everything on this dog, because now I know that somebody else, you know, has been bitten, even though Rick said it wasn't an issue, that you guys were, the kindness was a nip and nothing was going to happen. As a city council member, I have to make sure that we're covered. And so I wanted to see everything on Rico, but I couldn't get any other. And that's when we had the meeting with the four of us with Rick, and asked him, like, what's going on? Can we see the certifications? I, somebody's going to have to refresh my memory, because I don't exactly know when we finally did get copies of the certifications, but when we got them, that is when we realized that Rico had been certified since July of 2017. He was certified in 2016, and that certification went for a year and expired in July of 2017. So, that was an issue for me, whether it was state, federal, whatever, again, we have a lot of money invested in this dog for training and stuff not to be kept upon it. And not only for the training not to be kept on it, but all the training that we already paid for, we did certify him. Rick certified him in 15 and 16, so we paid for that certification. We paid for an officer to train him 16 hours a month, sometimes two officers, basically is of no use to us anymore either. And that was the meeting where Rick sent to us, I have not used a dog in two years because I knew he wasn't certified. And that was a real problem for me. I'm only speaking about me now. And so that's how all of this came to be, because I was new on the council, I didn't have any history with the K-9 unit, I had no information, and I couldn't get any. So I was literally trying to find information anywhere I could get it, or anybody who would talk to me. I went online, and I tried to find policies and procedures for K-9s, but the reality is, is that most departments have their own policies and procedures. So when a, when a department would get a K-9, they would take time and develop a whole plan around that K-9 before they would just go willy-nilly get one. I was very, very concerned, because when we asked Chief Scott any of the questions about the K-9, as far as the procedures, the policies, he didn't know. And it was very concerning to me that the handler of the K-9 unit could not answer really a single question about the policies and procedures around a K-9, be it at the federal level, the state level. Rick didn't know any of that. We had to go, after we asked him, he didn't know, we had to then go to other K-9 units and get the answers, because he didn't know any of it.
Okay.
So that's how everything sort of came, from the dog bites, to the certifications, to.
Again, all new information.
I'm sure it is.
Which could have avoided, had you been given the information that we asked for.
Well, I don't think any of that would have been.
Now let me jump back to the whole issue.
Should I ask that question?
No, I'm going to go now, next. Let me do it, because you're making accusations, and me and I won't address them. So, when this all started, Sue and I went and talked to four of you. They're in this room, right here. And we did it together with three of the four. There is one other person in the community that I talked to about this, that is a citizen, not a city staff member, and that is it. One, one person that I talked to. We went and met with the four of you, and asked individually to meet with you, so we could avoid public meeting laws. And we talked about three topics. We talked about Rico's training, and the fact that if you guys were going to let Rico overtrain because of the dog bites, that that would be a risk to the city for someone suing them, not us, but some defendant or suspect that got arrested and was bitten during the arrest. That would open the city up to liability. The second thing that we talked about was performance review risk, because we had heard, and it was later confirmed, that a performance review was left out in the open. In fact, two of the four of you confirmed that for us, that there was an employee review of the chiefs that was left out for others to read. The third thing that we talked about was conflict of interest risk. Whether or not it's true or not, doesn't matter, you were in business with the chief. I don't know if it ended well, don't know if it ended poorly, it doesn't matter. The fact that you were in business in and of itself is a conflict of interest. You could be biased toward him, you could be best friends, you could hate his guts, and be working against him. It does not matter. It would be no different if Sue and I supervised him because her and Tyler dated. And so, his performance reviews could go up and down just like a teenager relationship.
I don't have any.
She don't do any performance reviews.
Nothing.
But you're on the personnel committee.
I know, and you alluded to that.
And so that is a perceived conflict of interest.
No, I want to make sure you understand that.
Let me finish.
Can I just explain that?
Are those the fourth, the three things that we discussed with the four of you? Was there, I want to ask each of you individually, so we can get this straight. Is that what I discussed with you?
I don't remember all of the details of each of them.
Okay? Travis? Nate?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes.
Did I ever trash, or did my wife trash Stephanie?
No.
Did we trash their family?
No.
So, prior to talking to him and him, those are the four of the five people that I talked to. So how could there possibly be anyone, let alone three people, that I trashed your family to? How?
So...
She told me in an email, there were three people that she heard from that I was trashing.
So what I, what I said to you...
And I got an email to prove it, if you'd like to see it.
Oh, I know, I know. I read through it.
I can't wait.
So what I would say to you, Todd, what I would say to you is, I wouldn't have known, I'm, I'm just telling you, that I would never have known that you had a conversation with anybody about me, had somebody not told me about it.
I didn't have a conversation about you, other than that you had a conflict of interest, which is real and true, and he should be in the middle of advising you.
And second of all, not to, not to have a conflict of interest. Several times alluded to the fact that leaving on a personnel and dealing with this is a problem. The Personnel Committee has never once met about this issue. Not one time has the Personnel Committee ever met about this issue. I've never done a performance review with Chief Scott.
I didn't say you did.
I'm just making sure you know.
I don't know if you did or not. Alls I'm saying is that there is a perceived conflict of interest, and that could be a problem. Am I wrong on there?
Well, this is a wronged up one.
Are, am I wrong that there is a perceived conflict of interest that could be a problem? It's never said, did I ever use the terms, that there was a problem, to any of it?
No. I would also say that you could say that there's a conflict of interest with Sarah, because she owns a bar in town, which clearly the chief would, Doug owns a bar in town. So that could, and in the past, that has been a conflict of interest.
I don't disagree.
The mayor was not.
You're absolutely right.
So at that point, with all the conflict of interest that you're pointing out, what would you have counsel do? Have nobody go down there?
Or find an outside liaison to take care of it, doesn't have a conflict of interest. And again, I don't know if you did or you didn't. That's not the point. The point is, is that they're truly, and therefore you should not be part of those decisions, and the key should be advising them.
I should not be part of what decisions?
You should not be on the Personnel Committee for Chief Scott, because you have a perceived conflict of interest. I agree, he should be there...
The Personnel Committee has never had anything like this.
I didn't say they did. You shouldn't be there. Period. End of story.
Well, that's the end of your story, but...
Am I right or wrong?
I don't believe, I don't believe there's a conflict of interest having her on the Personnel Committee. It's the Personnel Committee doesn't act on and make recommendations that it relates the chief on his reviews done by the mayor.
Okay.
Not only that, but it takes a vote of five to do anything, the three of us have to agree. So I, by myself, have no power to do anything to Chief Scott.
Okay.
At all.
So let me go back. So there was one person that I talked to outside of this. So if you're telling me you were here...
I don't know if that person can tell anybody else?
In your email, I couldn't trash you to that person either, so it's not even possible. In your email, you stated that the persons that you heard it from were people within side of the city.
What I said to you was, I can assure you that the person I heard it from is definitely somebody that I should have been discussing it with.
Okay. So I'd like to know, how can that be? Because I didn't discuss it with anyone outside of these four people.
I don't know if you did or didn't, and I don't know the person that you did or didn't did. So I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I wish I could answer that, but I have no idea.
Me too.
And I reached out to you, Todd, very nicely, just said, if you want to talk about it. I was not making a big deal about it, I was not blasting you, or I said, if you want to talk about it...
And I, I said, we would have trusted it, when four of the five people were in the room that I talked to, so we could get to the bottom of it, and I said, we did it. And I had no members to talk about tonight, because these are four of the five people that I discussed this topic with. And my wife was with me for everybody but John, and we didn't trash either one single person or...
I was just telling you that definitely...
I don't know you or your family.
One of the people is not in this room tonight, so somebody, again, I don't know who, I can't tell you who, but somebody is definitely talking about it outside of this room.
Right.
But it's a small town.
It's, it's no different than Nate's daughter hearing about it and going to Nate and talking about it. People talk once they hear, people talk. It's the game of telephone, you guys, like, legit.
And I really...
But nobody said that I was trashing...
No, I, I have never heard, I've never heard you trash them.
I was reaching out to Todd so that he could have a change. What I offered to him was, if you would like to have a conversation with me about my history with Rick, I would be willing to have that conversation with you, so that you could...
Understand.
Understand.
Here on side.
The situation.
Sure.
That is really what I want from this. I want everybody in this room, everybody who's ever been on a Zoom meeting, everybody who's ever signed a petition, I want everybody to know all of it. Because there's so much that you guys don't know, and some of it, we can't talk about. Some of it, we are bound by law not to be able to discuss. But rest assured, if it is something that I can tell you, I will absolutely 100% tell you, because I don't think anybody in this room knows everything. I believe there's probably some council members who don't know everything. I believe there's a lot of people sitting out here who don't know everything. So it's hard for anybody to make the correct or right judgment when they don't have all the facts.
I agree.
And that's what I want to happen out of this. And that's literally why we've given you an hour. I know most of people were like, we're cutting off, we're not doing this. And initially, I was that way too. We're not going to take a wall over our night with this, but I do think it's important that you understand that you might not have all the right information, and we might not have all the right information.
But Stephanie and I agree with you completely, and I've got some new information tonight. I'll be the first to admit when I'm wrong. I've done it before on bond projects with the school. I'll be the first one to admit it when I'm wrong. And that's why I copied all of you on an email to begin with, and then had a conversation with him, and got tricked into a conversation by him, to do it the right way and keep confidential only between us. And I asked all the questions and got stymied by these two guys.
What, what do you mean, tricked into conversation?
He got me on the phone when there was nothing in my data request that was not clear and not public data.
I disagree with that.
And then he got me on the phone the next day, saying, we've answered all of your questions, we're done here.
Excuse me. If you're going to accuse me of public forum of tricking you, I'm going to address this. First and foremost, you're right, I started drafting responses, then as I was drafting them, I was coming up with more questions. Then I called, talked to you and said, let, listen, let's meet, let's meet in City Hall. You said, I want to meet in City Hall.
No, I said, we couldn't meet this week, let's have the conversation so we can get it over with sooner.
That's, that's not what I remember.
I've got the email, we can pull it out.
You didn't want, you didn't want to meet in City Hall, then you suggested me to meet at your place. Then I suggested, why don't we meet in my office downtown, because both you and your wife work somewhat similar to downtown. You didn't want to do that, so we discussed...
No, no, we couldn't do that, in the time frame that we wanted to get it done with.
Okay. Anyway, we ended up having a phone conversation, we went through your list, answered all the questions we could, based on the information that we had at that time. There was no... Let me finish.
Can I finish?
Sure.
All right.
Will you not even let me?
Maybe.
If you're not going to answer, if you're not going to let him talk, we'll just end it right now.
I mean, we, we sat here and listened to you talk, let us talk, and then, I mean...
Mayor and I met on my phone, with both you and your wife, I think the, the discussion lasted for about an hour. We went through the items. My opinion was, I believe the mayor's opinion was, that we answered every question that we had information to that night. Okay? I followed up with you the next day via email, we already talked about this, on the document request. One through four you didn't want, I want to make sure, because I didn't want you to be upset, because we didn't produce one through four. Five and six weren't document requests, they were questions. Chief Scott prepared a document, we submitted that to you. There's no trickery going on here, sir. We wanted, we wanted to answer every question you had, and then you wanted to, you didn't like the four. You wanted me to, you wanted me to then reiterate all the responses in writing, but we already addressed the questions for you. And I said, if you don't have all the answers and information that you believe you're entitled to, and that we can answer. I, I must have asked it three times. Please come to a city council meeting, just like you're doing tonight. And you're getting that information.
No, let me, let me finish.
Hey, let me finish.
Yeah, go ahead, because you're just making your own.
And, and, and then, that is what we were proposing if you would do. You also sent an email on June 16th, or 17th, which we have right here. You struck the majority of the items that you had, because they've been answered.
Okay, so you had answered some, not all.
Yeah. Finished earlier, you said they'd been answered. Are, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then, tonight, I believe, you received all of that information, because I, in a public forum, because Mr. Nelson, you're not the only citizen in this town that wants this information. And so it makes more sense to bring it to council and talk about it in a public forum, so that everyone has this information, not just you. All right? And so that's what we're here to do. You also sent me another email, which you have to talk about tonight. You want to know how long I've been city attorney, how much money the city's paid for, for, for my services. And you're going to get that information.
Great.
But some of the questions you're asking about are covered and privileged by attorney-client privilege, and you're not going to get answers to.
Which ones?
I'll respond to that in the letter that I'm going to send to you.
Which ones?
I will respond to that in the letter that I'm going to send to you.
For the record, I have not asked any that are covered by privilege. I made very careful not to do that.
Well, that's not true, sir. You asked about, you asked about all email communications with respect to HIPAA, in other words, any legal advice I've given to council or the mayor. And you also asked what emails regarding conflict of interest. Again, that's asking for information, or I may have given this council and the mayor legal opinions. That's covered by attorney-client privilege.
Look at the way I worded it.
I did look at.
Okay.
Are you going to get a response?
Let's, let's move on.
I agree. So, again, if I had provided information, instead of getting the conversations that I did, and he stated in his little diatribe there, that he answered them all, he didn't answer them all, otherwise there wouldn't have been a list that came back with a few that weren't struck. And his response was, we think we've answered all your questions, take it to the council.
Well, let's talk about those.
Which is a good answer, if he thinks he's answered all your questions...
Let's, let's talk about those.
But there were number four, number four, number four in your list...
How long are we going to go on with this? Because every time we get an email, there's new ones...
I got, I got one question for you.
I'm done, because I'm moving on, because he's going to continue to claim that he answered them all, and he didn't. And I've got the screen, I can show you. It's, why, and again, if you had answered them, why not just send them?
I think at this point, I feel like you have cause of action against the city. I think you should file your suit, and let's go. Because we have spent so much time, and we have people taking time off work, because they're literally sick from dealing with this. This isn't, you know, we, we, there's still stuff that we can't share with you guys, that, you know, this is an ever-evolving thing. This isn't like, you know, we answered all your questions and now we're done. I mean, this is too much. We're, we're trying to be as transparent as we can with you, we're, you've been talking for an hour at least now.
Stephanie, I will say that you have been very transparent with me. If that would have happened for me, then one of these two guys, we probably would have...
Well, to be fair, I offered to be on that meeting, the very first meeting, and you did not want me on there, so just to tell you...
That's great, we were trying to keep it to a group.
I get it, but I have to tell you, I tried to be, to be fair, I did just right from the get-go.
It would have been great, you're right, I should have accepted that, because this was not the way it should go.
And I can't speak to what happened on that meeting. Mark has been our city attorney for I don't know how long. This is the second time I've worked with him on council, he's done an excellent job every single time you've been with him. And you have to remember that Mark is looking out for the best interests of the city of Lisbon. Mark does not care about you, me, Chief Scott, the mayor, anybody personally. What he cares about is the interests of the city of Lisbon. That is his job, and that's what he gets paid to do.
I think we have to disagree on the great job, because...
That's fine. We have to run in with him.
You mentioned something about Rick's performance review being seen. Did you, did, just a little, yeah. So what it is, is, um, we have some of these in the office, you know, like that. So when Connie prepares something, she takes that review, like that, puts it like that. The only ones that are, should be in the office are the city employees, and, and, city employees, basically, and the council, who seen that paper? Rick, come in here.
And I would like to add on to that, because this has been a huge issue for me as well, so...
Who's seen that paper?
What's that?
Who's seen your employee review?
I actually had to confirm by two council members.
Who's seen your employee review? That you said that you were getting about, that was in there? Who's, who's seen?
Said that some members of the fire department saw your employee review. Who was?
They were talking about it, I didn't, I don't know who saw it.
So I would, that was a very concerning issue for me as well, because we are not about leaving people's employee reviews out for everybody to see. So when I heard that the fire department, somebody in the fire department had seen Rick's review and had made a comment to Rick that he had bad years, what I was told, or what I think we were all told.
That's what we were told by Rick, yes.
So I went to the fire chief, and I said, listen, we have a problem, somebody's in that office that shouldn't be seeing employee reviews. I thought initially that Rick told me that it was the fire chief who saw the review, and maybe I misheard that, because I don't think anybody else remembers it that way. So apparently, it was just a fire member. So I went to Brandon, asked him about it. Brandon said, I never saw any review. I've gone to my people in the fire department, I've questioned them to see if anybody else saw it. Nobody saw it. I went back to Rick and asked him who it was that questioned him about it, and he doesn't remember. So we don't know if anybody saw that review. We have sent...
We can only go by what is obviously told to us.
On my request, there are now locked mailboxes in the city office. Every department has their mailbox, and they all have their own key. Nobody can access their mailboxes except for themselves. We only can do what we can do when we know about something. We did not know about that until Rick brought it to our attention. I have no idea if it happened or if it didn't happen. Nobody, nobody says they saw it, nobody knows anything about seeing it, and Rick doesn't remember who told them that they saw it. So we've done what we can to rectify that situation. That's all we can do.
I agree with that. That's good.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
In the two minutes it took you to respond to the six or so questions that he didn't have answered, so I couldn't have done that.
All he had to do was ask me. He had to, all he had to do, called me up, I would answer.
I think what Mark said, I, but here's the thing, is, Mark made a very clear point. A lot of people want to know the answers. So why not bring it to a public forum, so we could do it publicly for everyone to hear? Doesn't it make a lot of sense to you, to do that? So you got the answers?
I didn't have any, those were fucking...
No, I'm just saying, there's a lot of people that do. Us as the council and the mayor have been...
Specifically request those questions.
Jameis has asked some stuff, and I have responded to her.
Social media, everybody's asking.
But Sarah, you have a valid one. But just to be clear, and again, we can talk about it.
I, I, I understand.
Not the pretense.
No, but I understand, I, I, but it...
There's a whole bunch of people asking, let's take it there, that is not...
But it's true. There's a lot of people, my name has been bashed, my business has been bashed. I mean, it is...
Just to put this in perspective for you guys, we have three people sitting in this room. We have three...
You rashed me on Facebook, you tore...
I, I, no, no, we're done bashing people.
We have three people sitting in this room, as city employees, that have been threatened because of this, that have gotten threatening phone calls. I personally had somebody show up at my house at 2:15 in the morning. I personally had somebody show up at my house at 2:15 in the morning. I have no idea what they were going to do there. My dogs went crazy, they left. No clue. Every time you log on Facebook, tonight, for example, I, I deleted everybody out of my Facebook except for seven people. I now have 52 people back on there, but you know what? I deleted it so I wouldn't have to see this crap, but every day it still comes to me. Everybody sends it, screenshots. I don't care. Today, there was a post on Facebook, and Sarah, it's your post, and since you're here, I'll address it with you.
Go ahead.
That the city council is trying to hide things, that we're having meetings that we're trying to, I, I, no, I'm not talking to you, Danny.
Hold on. I'll address it because it was true.
Okay.
Well, then you wait your turn.
Let her.
No. I'm talking.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, I said I'll address it to you and I'll give you a chance to talk when I get done. And, and you guys are saying on Facebook and sharing with anybody who will look at it that the city is not being forthcoming with information, that we're hiding stuff, that we're having secret meetings.
True.
We've never once had a secret meeting. We've never once hidden a meeting, you guys.
It was sent to me. It's not public, but it's not public because I had to get rid of it because of all the stuff your husband said to me, called me names and everything he did to me.
Sarah, I would like to see the posts where you posted.
Okay.
I'm going to let Danny respond and I go respond to Janice.
I was contacted by Todd to get it out on Facebook.
So is Angela Alaba.
Okay. I was contacted by Todd to get the word out that people, people should be here and hear this stuff.
Yep, I agree.
I'm not taking, I, first of all, I'm not taking sides either way. My point of this whole thing is people need to know what's going on.
I agree.
I respect every one of you guys for being up here. I really do, because it's a crap job. But I think 95% of people in this town feel that Rick is a bunch of BS. And whether you guys feel that, maybe a difference of opinion between 95% of this community. That's why these people are all here and all pissed off. And that might be why he's here pissed off too, because he thinks it's that way. Difference of opinion maybe. And thank God you guys served because some of us maybe couldn't do it because we'd get pissed too. But the, the purpose of that post was just to get people here to hear his side of the story. That's it. The purpose of the, the petition for Rick, it was basically the people would, let people know that his job was maybe in jeopardy and that this needed to be worked out somehow. So we still had him as a police chief. That's simply all that was for.
And Danny.
And, and then, so your husband was calling those names on Facebook.
I never called you one man.
Bullshit.
All right, it's done, we're done. We're done.
You did too, Doug.
Danny, we're done, we're done. This is, this is done and over with.
But he could sit.
If you, if you want to talk about this, put it on the agenda, we'll, put it on the agenda and we will do it then. Okay? Get it on the agenda. Janice, you said you didn't get those documents.
No, I got the documents, but I didn't get answers to a couple of them, but you have answered them tonight.
Okay, okay. So we're done, moving on. Request to address the council by Jeff Stockman.
I don't have a lot to say except for the issue that Mr. Scott's talking about, I work behind him, redaining, it's a work in progress and it takes time. But I would, I'll respond, which I just haven't, I have nothing prepared to say.
Yep.
What issue are you talking about?
My, uh, autos or my car.
Okay.
Is Rick right out there?
Thanks, yours.
Could you just have to step in? Okay, we're, we're working, we're working on this one now. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I was just having to respond to questions, questions. I mean, you know, I, I received the letter when I went on.
Can we see the letter, Rick? Thank you.
Okay, well, um, we've had complaints about your cars, and we've had complaints that people see you going out by your car and going to the bathroom by your car. I mean, when's the last time that car was moved?
It's not powered up, it's powered up.
Tell me.
I mean, we have, we have ordinances on the book about junk vehicles sitting on city property, or not, sitting on city streets and stuff. I mean, so that, that is why you got served these papers? And I don't, I don't know if it's like, you have so many days, you do something, I, I don't, I don't know that. I'd have to look at it.
So he got a letter from the police department, he needed to do a vehicle.
Just a nuisance letter?
No.
What was it, what was it, Rick?
It's, yeah, the last time this happened, um, a company came in and got the car, are you open to that this time or not?
Who did what now?
The last time that we had this issue was your car. A company came in, took your car, I think they might have gave you some money for it or something like that, and then they got rid of it.
Oh, that was, that was the one that didn't run.
Can you handle it?
This car wore.
Okay, so what are you?
This car's been repaired.
Okay, so, so you're not interested in having them come purchase a car of you again? So, so you're in the process of cleaning it up?
Yeah.
And per the letter, how much time does he have to do that?
Um, two on Wednesday.
Of this week?
Yep.
And when did he get the letter?
The 17th, I think, was it, the 17th? I think that's what I saw on that.
Um, I came back to work on, I believe it was Monday, and there was an email from Connie that said that she received a complaint.
From Mark Moon.
From Mark Moon.
Oh, God.
Um, and, uh, so I got ahold of Doug, and we talked about it, and he said he wants action taken on it right away. So I decided I'd write a letter and declare the nuisance and, uh, because of the smell that's coming from the car, uh, if you want.
I can contest that. I drive past it every day with my window rolled down in.
And, uh, so Jeff, I wrote the letter, Jeff served it, and he served it with a certified letter.
So what happens if he doesn't have it taken care of by Wednesday?
I'm going to tow it.
Okay. So do you know that? If it's not taken care of by Wednesday, he's going to tow the vehicle?
And I just wanted to give, I just wanted to give Jeff the benefit of the doubt because our history isn't very good because usually when we, I usually come and tow his car, not once a year, and he goes to Duane's, and then he, he cleans it out, and sometimes he reclaims it, sometimes it don't. But understand that we, this is yearly, every year after year.
Jeff, is this, is there, is there valuables in that car or is it all just trash? Because honestly.
Clothes, DVDs, magazines, CDs, uh, books.
Okay.
Do you live in the car?
No. I live, no, he knows where I live.
Well, then.
Can those things be in your house? Can those things be in your house instead of your car?
Well, I own the house, so, you know.
Okay, but you rent a house and you could keep the contents in the house, right?
No, maybe, but I'm trying to throw, do what he wants and throw stuff away too.
Okay.
Well, you know what? I am gonna, I, I will let you, I own a dumpster.[1463.22]